Good evening and welcome to the Elk Grove Township Board Meeting dated August 25th, 2025. Would the audience please join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dukes.
Present.
Trustee Luji.
Present.
Trustee Stanyek. Trustee Weincoop.
Present.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Here. There, it's time for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the item, not an item on the agenda. If you would like to speak to an item that's on the agenda, that'll happen when we get to that item. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Everybody have an opportunity to take a look at the invoices and the town fund, general fund, road department, and sewer funds.
Yes.
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 All right. Any questions or comments? All right, and then if we just take a look at the department reports. On the administrative services side. You know, it's fantastic to continue to see the increase in the total rides completed. When you look at the numbers just from one year ago, 676 total rides completed to 877 this year, it's clear that the software system that the township invested in is really paying off and that we are able to serve so many more people. And specifically, when I look at the medical, going from 222 to 368, that is something that is really important to those who need to use the service to get to their medical appointments, and so I'm happy to report that. Also, the front office furniture was installed on July 7th, and as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, a very successful passport day where we had, for the month of July, 169 completed passport applications. So that's fantastic. That's, not only are we serving the residents of Elk Grove Township, but we are bringing in some additional revenue. And as you know, we're constantly spending money, and we're going to spend a little bit more money when we get to later part of our agenda, and so it's good that we have that ancillary income. On the social services side, I think it's worth noting that when you look at the general assistance recipients, for fiscal year '25, we had 56 people that received general assistance, and year-to-date, we've had 75. So that's significant increase. Cory, can you tell us a little bit about what's going on in the social service department these days? Everybody knows Cory Dewey, the Director of Social Services?
Lower this. Yeah, again, Cory Dewey, Director of Social Services here at Elk Grove Township. I first want to give a little information on what general assistance is. It's a very deceiving name because although it says general assistance, it's an incredibly specific form of assistance. It is a public aid program that provides temporary financial assistance for adults, so people 18 and over, but under the age of 63, who have no income or insufficient income, who cannot make, meet their basic needs in the forms of food, shelter, utilities, and transportation, and they are not eligible for any other financial program besides LIHEAP and SNAP benefits, which is antiquated term for food stamps. So within Elk Grove, or with all townships, excuse me, those folks have two different paths. They're either job searching, so they're able to work, or they are disabled, and they're in the process of applying for SSI, Social Security Disability Income, and supplemental security income, and they have not been approved yet. And so in the meantime, they need a safety net for the public aid code. There are some regulations that we must follow the public state code, and then there are some that townships cover. So most of our clients right now are on the disability path. We only have a few that are job searchers, pretty standardly, because we work with them. They do community work program. They work with our employment specialist, and then typically they're able to find work pretty quickly. But those that are disabled and unable to work, that path can sometimes be a little bit longer. And so some of the reasons we are seeing those increases right now is because it is seeming at the federal level and the state level, those cases are taking a little bit longer to be approved when someone is disabled, unfortunately, to get approved for those funds. And also, I think as a township, we have done a fantastic job of doing more community outreach, especially with our service partners, letting them know that this program is available. Because a lot of times, the folks that need it most don't access the internet, or they're not checking mail and things like that. It's hard to reach those people, so if we're able to reach the service providers that serve those people, it's easier to reach them and to service them in our community.
Great. So Cory, in your department, you're the director.
Yep.
And tell us a little about some of the other people that work in your department?
Absolutely. So in social services, of course, there's me. I've been here with the township for five years. And then our Associate Director, Andrea Corio, she has been with the township for over four years. Both of us have past township experience as well. Dana Riley is one of our newest staff members. She's our case manager. She's been here a year in September. She comes from Alexian Brothers, fabulous as well. Miriam Herrera, she's our older adults benefit specialist. She's been with the township for over 10 years, but her new position within social services is relatively new in the last few years. She specifically works with older adults to do their benefits, and it's been incredible. She's also a certified ship counselor, so that's Senior Health Insurance Program, so helping folks going on Medicare and changing during open enrollment and all that good stuff. Again, that's a certified program through the state that she's trained in, and it's a free service for residents. And then Jackie Monreal, she's our program support specialist. So not only does she need to be an expert in all of our referral sources and all of our screening processes, but she's really frontline of the township. And so a lot of experience. Three staff members are bilingual, which is fabulous. And then we also, of course, utilize different technologies for all different languages. And then throughout the township, I think we are now at five or six languages spoken fluently. And then, of course, being able to use technology in many ways, because we're seeing residents from many different places.
Excellent. So Cory, we've talked over the last couple of months about the social service program, and it's not as simple as filling out an application. There's lots of documents that need to be provided, and people need to follow up and provide you with that information. And while we may have served 75 people thus far this year, there are some people that are declined because they don't qualify, because maybe they qualify for another program. And so then you're doing, aside from helping them to determine whether they qualify for the township, you're also advising them on other avenues that they can go through.
Absolutely. Yeah. Our staff entirely, and we do track phone calls and stuff, we touch thousands of residents every single month. And so it's amazing, when you see a number that received emergency assistance or general assistance, to kind of get to that, I shouldn't say, but quote-unquote finish line, we've probably screened over 100 people. When someone contacts us, their problem is typically not just one problem, it's a holistic situation that is occurring. We also have a policy within our township, we do not say no to anything. If anyone calls us for something, we might not be able to provide it ourselves, but we are not going to leave them without an answer. So whatever that situation might be happening, we're going to find a way to embold them to help that situation. So correct, someone might call for, hey, I saw on your website you have general assistance, and they don't really maybe know what that means, but that doesn't mean, oh, no, you don't qualify. We are going to screen them for every possible avenue of service that we can provide. Of course, going with the ones that are typically the most attainable in the short term. Sometimes clients have a hard time gathering their documents. You know, a lot of people, if they've gone through eviction or natural disasters, things like that, hey, I don't have my birth certificate. Not only are we going to help them get those documents and secure them, but we're going to probably figure out a situation in the meantime. So that's a, and then again, a lot of people that are coming, some people coming to us, they maybe have untreated or undiagnosed mental health issues, or they're dealing with domestic violence, or they're dealing with just the stress of being on low economic platform, or whatever it might be. And gathering those documents that are required by law to have can be incredibly overwhelming. We work with them to try to make it work, but sometimes it might take a couple of months until they're approved. Because, you know, unfortunately, some of the stuff is black and white, and we can't process till we have all of it. But that's part of our jobs. That case management component of it is, hey, let's not just deny you, let's figure out a way to help you.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
Yeah. In your experience, particularly for senior citizens, how do you feel like they learn about this wonderful services that the township provides and that your department provides?
Yeah, definitely. So our seniors, I'm going to say, most of the ways they learn about us, A, good old-fashioned snail mail. If anyone ever said, hey, let's stop mailing a newsletter and just do it in email, I would say not a chance, because our seniors don't like that. They like to read something. We also do a lot of outreach with our senior centers and with our senior apartments, Meyer Station, Linden Place, Village Grove, all of those. We not only get the information out there, but typically every single year, we do onsite programming with all of those entity as well, and we will do applications onsite and screen them for anything that they might need. So those are just some of the ways. But definitely, especially now that we have a dedicated staff member that's doing applications for seniors, we're also letting the social security offices and DHS know that they can come to us to help with some of those things. Because especially post-COVID, it's very hard for seniors or anyone just to walk into a DHS office and talk to someone before it was a little bit easier. So we're letting them know, hey, some of these things that the seniors are trying to do are really easy to complete online, but they just might not have the tools or know how to. So then they'll be referred here to the township to get it completed. It might only take us a few minutes, but to them, it's quite a hurdle. And, you know, the libraries sometimes also get overwhelmed with things like that. So we also let the libraries know, hey, if you get a senior or anyone that comes and, I need to do a SNAP application, I need to do X, Y, Z, make sure that you send them to the township.
Thank you for the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
So Cory, what is our relationship like with the villages? Because my understanding is that we are the only place that can do general assistance, right? They don't have folks that do general assistance. So do you get a good amount of referrals from villages, departments of human services, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. You are correct. So townships are the governing entity that provide general assistance, that very specific program, to residents in Illinois. And so we are the ones that, exactly from that fund, we have to, so on and so forth. So all of our villages, definitely, we not only work with all of their heads of, I should say, social services. Every village, the five villages that we encompass, their structure is all different, but those people that are overseeing and working directly with clients, we work with them consistently. We're constantly working together. Oftentimes, when a client comes for assistance, we might not be able to help them fully, or vice versa, and then we're working together oftentimes to fund whatever that situation might be. So if I have a client, let's say, general assistance, and they live in the village of Mount Prospect, you better believe that they know that team over there, and they're also receiving all services that they could be eligible within their village as well.
All right. Thank you, Cory, and thank you. Please extend our thanks to your department as well.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
All right. And then looking at the food pantry, study amount of people that are using it. In July, we had over 1,100 households served, with a daily average of about 60 people. Donations continue to increase because of the demand, and we're grateful to our volunteers. Our volunteer hours for the month of July were 939, which is almost double July of 2024. When I look at one of the initiatives that the food pantry developed, and that is, you know, trying to find a way to acknowledge and show appreciation to the volunteers, there's a lot of volunteers who work in the food pantry. And trying to come up with a program where we would have like a Volunteer of the Month, there's way too many, there's only 12 months in the year, and there's way too many volunteers. So staff developed a program where they're doing a volunteer appreciation lottery. So the new program is every time you work a shift, you're able to put your name into the lottery. And, you know, the more shifts you work, the more lottery tickets you get. And at the end of the month, one lucky volunteer will receive $50. Trying to find a way to acknowledge the important work that they do, but as I mentioned, a Volunteer of the Month was very, very challenging to implement, because the last thing we want to do is make anybody feel that their service is not as appreciated as someone else's. Department of Youth Services had a great month. Right now, what they're doing is they're focused on preparing for the fall with District 59, District 57. But at the same time, they had programs going on throughout the summer at the township. They collaborated with the Elk Grove Police Department to host a youth police academy and career exploration of law enforcement through hands-on activities on our challenge course. Planned facilitated the Association of Illinois Township Committees on Youth, which is ATQUE, Summer Olympics as an innovative and creative way to support youth residents in our township. And we partnered with the Elk Grove Village Police Department Bicycle Unit to participate in the open ride events at the bicycle safety course, including the ride with an officer and a Q and A portion. I will tell you that the challenge course and the bicycle safety course, while they're hidden from everyone's view from the street, they are used on a regular basis. Every single day, there's a group out there utilizing the resources behind the Elk Grove Township Adult and family counseling. So I would say that we're at a point where, when we look at the number of counseling sessions from July 2024 to July 2025, we're looking at that number being significantly higher. It was 191 in 2024 and 282 in July of 2025. Fiscal year-to-date, in 20, last year was 664, and this year is 1,005. That continued increase is because of the hard work of our counseling team. It has a lot to do with the people that are referring people to us, and the social media, the information that's provided in the township newsletter, and then all the relationships that the staff has built with all the other agencies, the school districts, lead to this adult and family counseling service being so well utilized. And later in the agenda, we're going to talk about a change, an increase from part-time to full-time of one of our counselors. But I think it's important to mention that we're also taking care of people that are, English is not their first language. And so we have counselors that are bilingual, which is also very, very important to the people that are receiving those services, because while English may not be their first language, and while they can't speak English, they can express themselves better in their own native language. That wraps up the department reports. Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the audience have a question? All right. Can I get an approval for the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda. That includes the authorization for the payroll and bills, as well as the department reports.
Trustee Luji, second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Next time, I'll do a roll call. Sorry about that. All right. Everybody have an opportunity to read the regular board meeting minutes from the last meeting dated July 28th. Anybody have any comments or questions? Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated July 28th?
Trustee Luji makes a motion to approve the July 28th minutes.
You have a second?
Trustee Duke, second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Trustee Luji.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Weincoop.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. We have no presentations this evening. We're moving on to the reports of the elected officials. Let's start out with our assessor, Assessor Conny Caricelli.
I have lots to tell you this evening. Not much of it is good news. First of all, many phone calls have come into the office wondering where the second installment tax bill is. The bad news is that I have gone to many, many sources. I've been told euphemistically late fall, early winter. Really bad news, possibly January. Now, the January situation creates an entirely different problem. As you well know, you may take up to $10,000 off of your personal income tax for property tax. If that, if you pay that bill in January, you have lost that $10,000 for this year. So I want you all to be totally aware, we're going to keep as close a tab on this as we possibly can, and certainly update the website. But I want you to have in the back of your mind that if that bill is not there December 1st, that you attempt to prepay $10,000 or whatever toward that second installment tax bill, so you do not lose that income tax reduction. Now, the second question is why? Well, of course, we've been told they're transitioning into a new computer system. Well, that's well and good, but the old computer system was being run on a parallel basis. The information from the Cook County Assessor should have been with the Department of Revenue in December of last year. It did not arrive to the Department of Revenue until April. Now, as you know, once the Department of Revenue gets that, they must calculate the equalization factor that goes on your tax bill. From there, it has to go to the clerk's office, where the clerk determines the rate for your property from the various taxing bodies that encompass your property. And thirdly, then, it has to go to the treasurer's office to have the bills printed up. So if you are four, five months late in getting that data to the Department of Revenue, that's where the buck stops. Now, I would also hasten to mention that you should be in touch with your mortgage companies, because this may affect your escrow accounts. So please be aware of that. This is a situation that is totally unacceptable. Now, as you know, this year, we went through the TRI, the triennial reassessment, and we literally filed thousands of appeals to the Cook County Assessor. On going through the data, after those appeals were adjudicated with the assessor, we found out that the assessor declined 93% of the appeals. The good news is that we are currently open for appeals with the Board of Review, which has always taken a much more realistic approach to property value. We will be open for appeals until the 16th of September. So my office, you can come in, you can call, make an appointment, you can email us at egtappeals, and we will be happy to file that appeal for you. We sent out an email and a phone blast to all of those who are on our contact list. So virtually thousands of people have been notified. I have also noticed that Commissioner Steele has also sent out an email blast, the emails that she has access to. To further allow our taxpayers to be heard, we have scheduled three outreach programs with the Board of Review. The first is Wednesday, September 3rd, here in the Township Hall. That is with Commissioner Samantha Steele. The second is Wednesday, September 10th, again in the Township Hall with Commissioner Steele. And Thursday, September 11th, here in the Township Hall with Commissioner Cardenas. All will begin at 5:30. I will tell you that Commissioner Steele brings with her at least a dozen analysts, so that appeals can be filed on the spot, on the first two. And this is something that I commend her for, because she has been more than gracious in extending her staff to help us during this appeal time. I find that, over the years, I've always loved teaching, whether it was on the high school level, the college level, or on the level of teaching for the Illinois Property Assessment Institute. I've decided that with each board meeting, I will take a topic to help you understand the complexities and innanities of the Illinois property tax system. One of the things I'd like to talk tonight about is PTAL legislation. And you're looking at me and going, what is PTAL? PTAL is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. I'm sure you read about this over your morning coffee every morning. It's obscure, but it has such a major impact on our taxpayers. One of the problems with this is, if you have a home rule community, they have no limit on what they can levy against your property. Now, school districts do have caps, but as I talked to you last month, I told you that the Recapture Act has added to your tax bill, because the county assessor is wrong, and the Property Tax Appeal Board has lowered those, and those monies are going back onto you. So you're paying for the mistakes of the county assessor. When it comes to PTAL, there's two important pieces of legislation. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the first one. They have passed a law that says school districts no longer have to go out for referendum to build a school. You're talking a lot of money, aren't you, about building schools? You're also talking about disenfranchising the voter to have any say in that. So you can imagine that any school district could start building, and you have absolutely no say in it unless you come up with a legally worded petition, and you have it signed by your neighbors to get it put on as a referendum. Now, I'm sorry, but this disenfranchisement of you, a taxpayer, is totally unacceptable. Next month, I'm going to talk to you about something that's even more heinous, but I'll let you hang around and find out what that is. I will tell you that, as your taxpayer advocate, I don't expect you to know what PTAL is. I don't expect you to know what PTAB is, DOR, equalization factors. But the fact of the matter is, unless you become educated, and unless you finally say, I've had enough, and the only way to say that is to tell your legislators and your governor, I've had enough. The PTAL decision that I'll be talking about next month is tantamount to handing over your checkbook. The PTEL decision that I'll be talking about next month is tantamount to handing over your checkbook. This is unacceptable. It reminds me of a wonderful old movie, I think it was called Network. And what I remember from that was, "I'm mad as hell, and I'm not going to take it anymore." And that is the purpose of bringing these subjects to your attention. You need to be mad, and you need to do something about it. Because if we are to have a true democracy, you've got to have the voice of the people. It always reminds me, it only takes a match to start a forest fire. And that's my report.
Thank you, Connie. I have a question for you. This PTEL legislation has passed, or?
It's passed.
It's passed. And when did it pass?
I believe last year. The one that's coming up that I'll talk about next month was passed last year also. So, it's, this is getting to the point of critical mass. There is only so much, I, the seniors that come into my office, the people who have always paid their bills, and they've always paid their taxes, and they're being forced out of this state, and it's unacceptable. We are one of the highest tax states in the nation. And I can name them off as you can. It's not only property tax, it's income tax, it's energy tax, it's gas tax, it's utility tax. Enough is enough. I'd really love to see somebody come in with a program with, open the books. Where are they spending this money? And are they spending it reasonably? My topic next month is certainly going to be one I would hope that you'd come and listen to because I don't know about you, but I am a taxpayer advocate. And I've seen what these taxes are doing to my constituents, and I find it totally unacceptable. Now, perhaps I feel a little more free to talk about it because I'm not running again. So, quite frankly, I don't care what they have to say about me. But the fact of the matter is, people need to start getting angry. Any other questions?
Trustee LuJai?
Thank you. As also a fellow educator and a government teacher, I will say, and my question is, this PTEL was passed by the democratically-elected constituent and legislator of Illinois, and was it also signed by the elected governor of Illinois? As in, there's not just a random body making these laws and passing them down? Or this is a state law that was recently passed, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The bottom, the bottom line is, how many of their constituents throughout the state even knew about this?
Education is always important, absolutely.
You know, this is the problem. Passing bills at quarter to 12 at night or whatever, we no longer have a media that is covering what's going on in Springfield. And you can't have an informed electorate if they don't have the information of what's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very true, very true.
All right, well, thank you for your report. Now, we're moving on to the clerk's report. Ms. Rowland?
Mine is short and sweet. We had one FOIA request this month asking about if we had a capital improvement plan, and Administrator Monzo got back to David Cox with firmographs who requested that. And then, the second item is, we will be involved in the Elk Grove Village Hometown Parade on Saturday, September 20th at 2:00 p.m. So, elected officials and staff members, let me know if you can join us. Again, it is a shorter parade than Mount Prospect, and usually a cooler parade than Mount Prospect. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, it's time for the supervisor's report. A vacancy has been created in the Youth Services Department, and I've worked with Director Dorn to realign the program goals and update the job description to better reflect the department's needs. Recruitment for a youth services facilitator will begin this week. Also, the flooring installation in the youth services room has been completed, and the office area and everything looks fantastic. So, thank you to, to staff who worked on this. You know, there was, you know, aside from Romero collecting the proposals for, the proposals for the flooring work, staff had a lot of work to do of moving things around and just staying out of the way. But turned out very nice, so congratulations on that. Staff has been working diligently to update and formalize the internal processes. This includes updating and collecting emergency contact information from all the employees and reviewing and refining current job descriptions to ensure they remain accurate and are aligned with their job responsibilities. In finance, the township has received its draft audit report, which has been reviewed by myself, the township administrator, and the director of finance. The board will receive a presentation from the auditors at the next Elk Grove Township Board Meeting on September 22nd. As for the building itself, the township has begun collecting quotes for the installation of a fence along the west side of the building and the challenge course. The facility manager is also working with Lionheart on testing, inspecting, and potentially updating the large building generator located on the west side of the building. The township conducts an annual inspection on the generator around this time of year, and year after year, the unit continues to deteriorate. To date, the board has approved invoices for small repairs, including a new gas line, to ensure it remains safe and functional. At some point, I may request the board to consider a larger capital improvement project to improve the generator's long-term functionality. In July, we had back-to-school blast-off completed, was completed. It ran from June 16th to July 31st, supplied 19 different schools with school supplies, hitting every village city we serve. The number of items this year was greater than last year by 500 items. In August, the recycle program for the food pantry, which is a year-long program, received a huge donation, and this is for the baler. We have the cardboard baler. And a couple of years ago, the board decided to purchase this baler and not only recycle all the cardboard that we have from the building and from the food pantry, but that we would take clean cardboard from businesses and anybody else. And so, now, we recycle those bales of cardboard. We get paid for that cardboard. And once we've paid everything off, then any additional funds that we receive would then go to the food pantry. So, again, trying to have some, a little bit of additional revenue so that when the time comes and we need to be able to have additional food, we will have those funds. So, we received a huge donation from School District 59 from their back-to-school supplies and new Chromebooks. In total, we were able to get four bales of cardboard just from their donation alone. A shout-out to Romero for always helping to pick up the donations and additionally coordinate drop-offs to our warehouse, along with two food pantry volunteers who broke down all the Chromebook boxes within a span of just a few days. You know, so it makes it sound pretty simple, you know, but a few days of breaking down cardboard, it's a lot of hard work, so thank you to them as well. We're currently working with a few other companies in the area to coordinate large cardboard donations. The senior walking path, we had, on August 7th, four people in attendance this month, but it was still a very hot day, so we're expecting that in September, it becomes better. The vegan co-packer food donation, the vegan co-packer donated four pallets of crumb cakes and tuxedo cakes totaling almost 2,000 pounds. The bike safety open ride was on August 13th. Around seven people were in attendance. This included kids who participated in the bike safety class held before the open ride and people who came just for the open ride. Schools in the surrounding areas started school this week, which affected the number of participants and attendance. The Elk Grove Village Police Bike Safety Department were also on site during the open ride to interact and help with the kiddos. And we also had a donation of food on, in early August from Rally Together Indivisible of various shelf-stable items. That completes my report. Anybody have any questions?
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the township elected officials' monthly reports?
Yes, I move to accept the township officials' monthly reports.
Trustee LuJai seconds. Roll call?
Trustee WineCoupe?
Present, or aye?
Trustee LuJai?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
There are no correspondences or old business to discuss. Next item on the agenda is new business. The approval of status change from a part-time adult and family counseling therapist to full-time. I'm recommending, I am recommending the board approve the change, board approval to change the status of a current part-time employee to full-time. This part-time role was originally created by the prior township supervisor and the, and the prior board for a male bilingual therapist. Supervisor also shared with me that, at that time, that his intention was to eventually extend, expand this role to a full-time position. Tonight, I'm recommending that we move forward with that change. As discussed at the July board meeting, and due to continuous demand of our adult and family counseling program, I'm recommending the board approval to change the status of a current part-time employee to full-time effective September 1st, 2025. Upon approval of an offer letter will be presented, upon approval by this board, an offer letter will be presented to the employee. This recommendation is based on both departmental need and individual's strong qualifications. The employee has already completed over three months of service with the township, demonstrating professionalism, reliability, and a strong connection with the clients and colleagues. He holds two master's degrees and is a bilingual family therapist, making him uniquely qualified to meet the needs of our diverse community. Few surrounding programs are able to offer this level of expertise. In addition, the employee is available to work four evenings each week until 8:00 p.m. This expanded availability will significantly increase the counseling department's capacity and allow more residents to access services during evening hours when demand is high. The demand, the proposed salary range for this full-time role is $59,000 to $61,000 annually. This range aligns with similar positions in surrounding townships and reflects the responsibilities and qualifications of the role. The status change will allow the township to expand evening hours, evening availability, strengthen its counseling services, and retain a high-quality and well-integrated employee. After reviewing the therapist's performance, his connection with clients, and his overall fit within the department, I believe the change is both appropriate and a great addition to the program. Financially, this adjustments, this adjustment will increase the counseling salary line item by approximately $48,000 plus related healthcare benefit costs, bringing the line item to approximately $298,000 for the department compared to the budgeted $250,000. Even with this adjustment, we will remain within the overall town budget. Upon approval, the township will have four full-time therapists, including the director and one part-time therapist. Our team will, our team will include licensed clinical social workers, one, I'm sorry, two licensed clinical social workers, one licensed clinical professional counselor, one licensed professional counselor, and one licensed social worker. Collectively, they bring expertise in social work, counseling, psychology, addictions, and parental education. Importantly, three of our therapists speak Spanish, and one speaks Hindi, and, I'm going to blow it, Dugardi. This combination of advanced credentials and language skills positions Elk Grove Township ahead of the curve and ensures our counseling program is among the strongest and most accessible in the surrounding area. At this time, I would ask the board if they have any questions regarding this proposed change.
Can I make a comment?
Trustee WineCoupe?
Comment? I just want to, first of all, thank the Counseling Department and the director for recommending this change. We're, we are ahead of the curve in terms of providing these services. As a mental health professional, I can also vouch that this salary is within the appropriate range and that this is a great investment. We're getting a great value for what the township's investing in the residents and the community here. So, thank you for proposing that and for recruiting somebody that wants to do this, this work. Because even though this is an appropriate range for somebody in a community-based agency, and please don't tell this person, but they can make 20% more in, you know, being in private practice somewhere, sitting at home on their couch doing virtual sessions, because that's the world we're living in. But the township continues to attract talent that is committed to community service, and I think that's a credit to the, the staff and the leadership within the township. So, thank you all for, for doing that and supporting that kind of a culture.
Thank you, Trustee WineCoupe. Anybody else? Just as a heads-up, we generally don't tell the staff that they can make more in the past.
No, I'm for radical transparency, Supervisor Scaletta. I think the, the assessor and I have the thing in common where we don't really care that much about what people think.
There you go.
So, we just want to, want to say what's on our minds, so.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve this recommendation.
Trustee Dukes recommend motion to approve the part-time status to full-time.
Trustee LuJai seconds. Roll call?
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee LuJai?
Aye.
Trustee WineCoupe?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
And we're now at the point of our agenda where I'm going to ask if any of the trustees have any comments or any questions or anything that they wanted to say before we adjourn the meeting. Trustee WineCoupe?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a list of gratitudes this evening, so, and recognitions. So, first of all, I want to recognize fellow trustee LuJai on 10 years of teaching at Naperville Central. That both speaks to your commitment to public service and also to your youth. Only 10 years. It feels like you could have been there longer.
You're a talent, yeah.
You're such an expert educator. I also want to recognize and thank the residents of the township that have come to the meeting tonight. This is well-attended. Appreciate all of you being here. Spread the word. These, these meetings are interesting. You're going to learn things. We've already got a great tease from the assessor that we're going to have, you know, more education next month, which I'm looking forward to as well. I want to shout out the American Red Cross and the Mount Prospect Park District and the Human Services Department. You all are aware, we had a big storm. Many people were affected. Some people were affected more than others. And so, over 300 Mount Prospect residents lost housing in that storm. And the American Red Cross responded very quickly. They used park district facilities to provide temporary shelter. There's just great coordination. I know the township played a role in some of that in terms of supporting those Mount Prospect residents. And as a resident of Mount Prospect, I really appreciate the intergovernmental and nonprofit, public-private kind of work that goes on in those situations. Also, again, just like in all the disasters and, and things that impact our residents in Elk Grove Township, the township residents are the best helpers for each other. So, there were more donations than people could even handle. They had to be turned away and siphoned off because there's just too much. And sometimes inappropriate donations, given, you know, the immediate circumstance and the need. And then, I also want to recognize the, the township staff and the previous board for their stewardship. Tonight, we just increased spending on a line item because we had money in the budget to do that. That's good stewardship. That's planning. That's budgeting for a margin so that when opportunities present themselves, we don't have to be, oh, gosh, I wish I would have or have regrets about passing up on something that's really an important investment in the community. So, that's good stewardship, and I want to recognize the previous board and the supervisor for that investment, as well as the staff for running a very lean ship around here. You know, yeah, it's just, it's just $5 on this and $10 on that, but five and 10 adds up. And if you do that over the course of the year, all of a sudden, you don't have $58,000 to increase the line item for the counseling department. So, much appreciation to the foresight that went into all that.
And congratulations to trustee WineCoupe on being an official empty nester. So, thank you so much. And everything else he said, absolutely agree. So, thank you for bringing all of those up.
I guess the one thing that I would mention that I could have mentioned earlier this evening is that the township will do as much as they can when there are these natural disaster, when there are these natural disasters. We are limited by state law of exactly what we can do, but I'm happy to report to you that the Community Empowerment Fund did contribute $1,500 to the effort in Mount Prospect as they had a lot of people that were helping them, and they-
Mount Prospect, as they had a lot of people that were helping them, and they didn't, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen, not going to work well, especially when you're dealing with a disaster, and you have people that are homeless, and just looking for a place to stay, and looking for clothes to be able to go to work or school in the next day. So I'm pleased to report that the Community Empowerment Fund did contribute $1,500. All right, if nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn? Trustee LuJai motions to adjourn.
Trustee Dukes second.
Roll call.
Trustee LuJai?
I.
Trustee Dukes?
I.
Trustee Weincoop?
I.
Supervisor Scaletta?
I.
Thank you all for joining us, we will see you next month, September 22nd.